Health and Welfare. I tell you, health and welfare news to go.
I have two questions.
I still haven't found me yet. Health gets too much money now, Commissioner. Health gets too much money now. St. Mary's will be open soon.
I know, that's why we're doing it. And mainly because they invited me. I'm about to be soon on Shelly. What? Have you ever had a pickle soup?
Hey, since I'm retired, I'd like to do some soup. Since I'm gonna be retired, I'd like to do the older soup.
It really was disgusting. But it should've been garnished with pepper.
I'd like to create a new job.
You ready to go? Alright. Yes, she asked if I wanted to be, so let's do it. So, you all ready to go? Everybody ready? Betty, ready? Ready, Betty? Alright, gonna call a meeting to order. Any minute, reports received and filed. Betty?
Yes, I do have recorder of these, please, for my out.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner, committee liaison reports. Liaison, liaison, liaison.
Now I have that K W O S thing tomorrow.
You got C C E M S, open house today? Was that eleven?
Do we have it today? I don't have that on my calendar.
Yeah, it is today.
He told me he wasn't.
Yeah, I got it.
What time is it?
Eleven to one, just kind of an open house thing. Takes care of us. That's where Kevin will be. Okay. Upcoming meetings and events. Deer season, Saturday.
It's a national holiday.
Yes. Monday off.
Has everyone come down with the float?
That should be the floating holiday.
Has everyone come down with the float?
Friday before deer season. Yeah, St. Mary's is living Sunday, aren't they?
Commission comments. Did you get this? There was a request for us to sign this Marvin Register Day.
I thought, I thought that day was the best day we could have. Just to make sure it was signed and I just sealed it so it's legal.
Is that at Sunday? I'm fine with it.
No, it's not Sunday.
We'll make Marvin Register Sunday.
You notice, I'm gonna tell you something. As you noticed, your signature, your signature, his signature, his and mine, and everybody else is on it, so it makes it legal.
But there's changes there and they have not been initialed yet, so we will take another advisement.
Don't make any difference. You guys signed, I signed, and it's legal.
I didn't sign this.
They paid everybody in the county as well than I saw.
No, I signed it without.
No, without the added verbiage.
Okay, enough having fun, let's get serious. Signing of agreements, Cole County Health Department, diabetic class instructors.
We have this screening for the two ladies that come in. Our diabetic education classes.
Any questions? Okay. Entertaining a motion to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Entertaining a motion. All second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Stand right there.
Yes.
I forgot about that part, when I'm in charge, I have to sign stuff. Next time, tell Chris he's in charge. Actually, Sam? Okay, signing of central link maintenance agreement on Cisco intrusion prevention module annual maintenance.
This is just like an annual, it's almost like a virus protection thing, but we have to pay by annual deals so we get updates continually on our intrusion prevention module.
Okay.
I can allow you a contract, that's a deal.
I will.
Have we had any? Have we had any? Isn't this the fairly expensive contract on all the different licenses or?
Well, no, this is the one off on this one, but it's one among many. The deal with Cisco was that last year or a year before, they decided to start charging an annual fee to even run their equipment. That's just out of blue, but this is because it does get updated every, it's not every day, it's about every two, three days it gets updated. But down there, we don't keep current.
It's about fourteen hundred dollars.
About the same as usual?
Yeah.
I will entertain a motion to sign the products and services agreement of Century Link Sales Solutions Incorporated.
So moved.
Second, all my favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Big hand done. You won't have any. Moving on, signing a contract with Rico.
If you're just wanting to purchase a scanner, copier, printer, and it's under the good limit, they just asked that all offices sign that. If the gentleman would've put it under Cole County instead of Cole County Sheriff, they had already had it signed. Jill has looked at it, and they made revisions that needed to be revised. She'd be good to go.
You got questions?
So, just questions on your comment there. So had they put it under Cole County Sheriff versus Cole County?
No, they put it under Cole County Sheriff instead of just Cole County.
Okay.
And I guess the system wouldn't let them change it.
Okay, just on their end. Is there a maintenance agreement with this?
That is the maintenance.
It is the maintenance agreement.
Yeah, purchase and maintenance service.
How much is the maintenance agreement?
It doesn't mean they get around a hundred dollars a year. I don't remember off the top of my head.
That's not, I have my doubt in this. It's included in the price of it, which is... Okay, the actual price isn't on there, this is the actual... So we already have the scanner, right?
No, I guess they're still holding it.
No, it's within your exposure?
Yes.
The only other question I got is, are we sure that we're not exceeding ninety days with this vendor with all departments?
I looked at it.
You did?
Yeah.
Betty does have access to pulling up? To look at the vendors?
So?
I have not personally looked at it.
Right. Anyway, we just need to be cautious of that too, so I'm okay.
Alrighty. Entertain a motion to sign the contract with Rico.
So moved.
Second, you gotta do a roll call on that for signing the contract.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Only needs one signature here, I guess. Accounts payable review, Debbie, if you want to go ahead and do that while I'm...
Ask for approval of accounts payable.
Yeah, I got a few that I'm gonna talk to some people about, but overall, I'll... I moved to approve the accounts payable.
Alright, I'll second. All my favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mark? Okay. Delivery of auditor's budget for 2015. Jim, how you doing?
Little better.
Little better? You got about forty-eight days and then you'll be happy, happy, happy? Forty-eight days was sent here. Yeah. Fourteen hours, thirty-nine minutes.
You're getting really good.
Well, the floor's yours, Serge. Kristen, you taking the orders?
I think I'm gonna drive today.
You're gonna drive?
Yep, yep.
Alrighty.
We're here to present the 2015 Budget Officers Recommended Budget. I have given most of the people here a lovely budget book. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing for you. I'm gonna hit the highlights and let you all read it at your own time. We recommend that everybody read the budget message at the beginning. It kind of explains the budgeted narrative, does some tables for you. Some of the budget highlights for fifteen. Total financial resources available for expenditures is slightly over sixty-one million. This is before transfers. Total planned basic operating expenditures of about forty point nine million. This is before reserves. We have planned seven point nine million in infrastructure projects. Almost fourteen million in public safety, including law enforcement activities. Reserves in all funds are at or above the target level of eight to fifteen percent of basic revenue. We've also included a salary adjustment in the budget this year. Two percent COLA to employees and a pool in each department for a merit or market adjustment. The county has also agreed to cover health insurance and dental insurance for employees in the coming year. If you guys wanna run through the tables real fast, if you go to table one on Roman numeral six, this table is a comparison of the fourteen budget to the fifteen budget. As you can see, overall, the total financial sources and uses is almost exactly the same as last year. There's about a four hundred dollar difference. There are some changes in the table above as far as how it's broken down. License fees and permits is a big one. You'll see a reduction there due to only one election next year. Our recording fees are down. And we've completed a large joint city-county project where we were receiving fees from the city. Also, you'll see a large increase in miscellaneous revenue. This is due to the addition of an internal service fund in the fifteen budget for our self-insurance. It was not in the fourteen budget, but it is included in the fifteen budget. It's almost two point three million there. So you'll see that large increase in miscellaneous revenue. On the expenditure side, of course, you'll see that salary increase in the personnel services. The total across all funds and all employees is about four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for that salary increase. There's also a large decrease in the capital outlay. We had at least three large projects that we completed in 2014. It's gonna be Business Fifty, Frog Hollow, the expansion at EMS. So you're gonna see that large decrease in capital outlay from fourteen to fifteen. If you wanna move on to table two, page Roman.
Before you go on there, miscellaneous revenue? That was just, is that more or less reserves for our self-funding of our insurance or?
We consider the payment that we take from payroll. We put it into that kind of as a revenue of money there available to pay for those insurance claims. You'll also see the offsetting on, I think it's under materials and supplies is the insurance line of it being paid back out.
Okay.
So it offsets. I mean, all the revenue in is also considered revenue, our expenditures out. If you go to table two on Roman numeral eight, this is the total budget broken down by the major funds. General Fund, Roan Bridge, sales tax, law enforcement, EMS. We combined all the smaller funds together into other funds. And then we total all those together in the last column to come to the same numbers that are on table one. This gives you a clear breakdown of transfers in and out between funds. It gives you the breakdown of different sources of revenue like sales tax between the different funds. It gives you a better picture of revenue and expenditures broken out by those larger funds. If you move on to table three and table four on pages ten and eleven. These two tables kind of take the expenditure side and break it down by resources used in table three. So personnel services, materials, supplies. You can see the cops payment out of the law enforcement fund broken out there. As compared to table four is expenditure by resource or function. You see general government, public safety assessment. It's just two different ways to look at the expenditures. Both show a little bit of a different picture. It's also comparative, so you can see thirteen actual versus the fourteen amended budget and then our projected actual. And then you see the department and the budget officer. Moving on to table five. Here we start to break down individual larger funds. So the first one is the general fund broken out by itself. Again, it is comparative. You'll see thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. You can see there that if you look at total basic revenue, the difference between the thirteen actual activity and the fifteen projected budget is only about three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. A relative difference of only about five percent. This means that general fund is very stable. There are some small changes in the breakdown above depending on our activities for the year, number of elections and things like that. But it means that overall, general fund is a very stable fund for us. The total budget, basic revenue for fifteen is nine point four million. If you include the beginning reserve and transfers in, we're twenty million. If we look at page fourteen, table six, this is the law enforcement fund revenue and expenditures. Again, a comparative table. In the past, the law enforcement fund has been our most unstable fund. We did have an operating deficit that was built into the fund. We have had some changes in the last couple years. The addition of some fees to other agencies for housing prisoners. We have also refunded the second portion of our cops to reduce our debt service payment. This year, the law enforcement fund is, does not have an operating deficit built into their budget. Their budget is actually no surplus or deficit. It is balanced. Their total basic revenue is eight million. Their total operating revenue is fourteen point nine million. There's no large changes that I know of in that fund this year. Everything kind of has stabilized out. You will see that increase in their license fees and permits. If you look from thirteen to fifteen, you're talking about two to three hundred thousand.
What's your projection for sales tax?
Our sales tax projections this year are flat. So we took and projected out an annualized fourteen to five point five million. That is our projection for fifteen, so we kept it flat. We did not put an increase in sales tax revenue. You will also see no increase in property tax revenue because we left the levies flat. There's no increase there. So taxes have remained very much the same from fourteen to fifteen. If you look at table seven, we have emergency medical services. This table's a little bit different because we combined two funds into this one table. We do both the emergency medical services, sales tax, and the EMS enterprise fund together to give you a picture of all the EMS activities in one table. You will see the largest change in this fund or these two funds is the capital outlay expenditures. We did have a large remodel project at the South Ridge Building that was completed in 2014. So you see that capital outlay go from one point nine to only seven hundred thousand in 2015. You will also see there, we have the sales tax transfers there showing the money that goes to general fund and kind of an internal transfer there between the two EMS funds. Their total operating revenue is one, or seven point six million. And finally, we get to table eight on Roman numeral sixteen. It gives you the projected ending reserves in the, each of the larger funds and then the smaller funds together. You will see that we do have over our recommended reserve in all of those funds. The only one under ten percent of total resources is the sales tax fund, the capital improvement sales tax fund. This is due to the large projects that are in there. We budget the whole project, but they're multiple-year projects, so that one's a little more difficult to do compared to some of the other ones. That's also why you will see those operating deficits in those funds because of those multi-year projects. We have to encumber the whole project when we start it, even though we may not spend the money until years down the line. You'll also see an operating deficit in the general fund. This is mainly due to the way that we budget personnel services. We budget based on position. We consider in the budget that position is going to be filled all year long and we do the benefits on that position for the whole year. We do have lots of things. We have positions that are open during the year. We have a lag in the time when loggers begins. If we have someone that is not here to be vested in SERF, we get their money contributed back. So there's lots of things with personnel where we have to budget based on the position being full all year, but it does not always come out to where we budget it. So we have an operating deficit built into the budget, but the last few years, we have not come in at a deficit in that fund. Let's see, I think I've covered everything. We want to say thank you to all the departments, the commission, Debbie in finance, everybody that's helped us put together all of the information. It takes a lot to come up with a financial plan for the entire county when we have this many individual budgets to put together. So it's a lot of hard work for everybody over the last couple months and it will continue to be for the next couple months when they meet with you guys. But we wanna say thank you to everybody. Jim, you have any comments you wanna?
Getting good.
That was, that was the penny tour of the book. We'll let everybody else kind of look at the rest of it on their own. Do you guys have questions you wanna ask before?
Did you say what percent for the merit? You said you all had a percent or a pool for the raise for merit?
There wasn't a percentage. We took a number of full-time positions in each office and came up with a pool of money based on the number of full-time positions.
So two percent COLA and then your other number that you used?
You'll have to look at each individual department to see what their pool is.
And that, I mean, I wanna work on getting a raise for the employees to be one of the top things we're gonna work on this year. But the formula for that, we had fun with it. It's that two years ago. Because Mark likes to merit and then having it structured differently. I didn't care for that as much, but that'll be one thing we have to discuss and see and think about. We had what percentage COLA or merit? Or just give the directors or elected officials a pool and say, y'all figure out how you wanna divvy it up. So, but we'll definitely be working on that. I think, I think you're in the same boat too. For the raises.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to look at it totally different from COLA and merit, but anyway, we can talk about that at a later date.
Right now, it's in there as two separate ones of percent COLA for all employees and then this separate pool to be divided up how?
Okay.
For, for our agency, I like the way it's broken down because I think there's, there's, the cost of living is the cost of living. But then the merit side of it, and we do, we do individual appraisals throughout the year. Every person should know where they stand in a given month. But we work very hard to make sure they know where they're standing and that money gives us motivation for people to improve and progress.
Personally, I like that more in the merit for y'all to work with.
Well, we'd like about a percent COLA.
I would do zero COLA and three percent merit. Let you all deal with however you want to. But that's just, I don't know, we got elected officials in here.
You have to look at the COLA as keeping the living wage. I mean, all of the other things are going up. People have to continue to grow a little bit every year to keep up with the growing costs of gasoline and groceries and utilities. At the moment, it is. Wait till this summer.
Mark's not here to argue with you.
So I think you have to see that COLA as the living wage. You have to keep up. You don't want your employees to make less money next year than they did in the current year because all of their other costs are going up.
I don't have a question really, but it's more of a comment. And Jim, you're gonna be leaving at the end of the year. And Sheriff, I think over the last six years, watching over the law enforcement fund? Well, okay, my six years, I know it was one of the things that we met several times with. To get it into a balanced budget is, I think, everybody's to be commended for that, to work on that, so, nice job.
I was just blessed by that, that line in there that you quoted said stabilized.
So, it's amazing what a little girl will do.
I've always worked, and I think Kristen has worked with me, on a ten-year budget. We project out at least five years. So when we say we're gonna have an operating deficit and we still recommend a compensation increase, we've done that in light of the trend that we see over the next five years. And we think it'll still be very stable even though the reserves are there, the projected revenue is there. And we think this is a very low-risk expenditure.
I don't have anything, so.
Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you. The book's gotten smaller too. Less paper.
We got less money.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Well, I emailed you yesterday. I'm sorry. The budget hearings will start December one. So as a department, you can look over what the auditor's office has done and then you'll be coming to that hearing on December first. I think I sent out an email yesterday, but I reset it.
I didn't get it yesterday.
We didn't get it.
I didn't either.
Oh, well, maybe it's to my department.
So maybe, maybe just Sheriff's Office.
I don't think we have to make a motion to accept auditor's budget.
I'll send it out again.
Debbie, we don't need any action on this. We're just, this is just being presented, right? Okay. Okay.
Any comments then? Close hearing, right?
No, we don't have any hearings on it yet. The hearing will be in January. Actually, we have, we have extra time with the new commissioner coming on, so.
It's already sent. Do we want to have them reverse, will it be expected to know how to divvy up that pool? So it'll be a personnel, okay?
No, it's gonna be a line item, but I think.
We typically don't do raises till after the first of the year, till the budget's completely done, so we'll... I mean, that's, I assume that's how we'll do it again this year is we'll back all the raises out of the auditor's budget and then we'll start looking at the budget and then we'll look at raises once Sam takes office and tells everybody they're not gonna get a raise, so.
Okay. Well, we'll move on then, I guess.
You can make a motion to accept the recommended budget. I think you better, since it has to be done by the fifteenth.
To accept it?
To accept the proposed 2015 budget.
Recommended.
Recommended.
Okay.
Alright, I move that we accept the auditor's budget for 2015.
The recommended budget? Okay, I'll second. All my favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. There, we accepted it.
Okay, thank you.
Formally accepted.
Alright.
Is it just the budget now, right?
Recommended. Alright, first reading of budget adjustment number seventeen. I did not open that document. Debbie, you wanna tell us what it is?
It's for fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. It's a grant for the youth tobacco prevention.
Okay, and we set that back for the second reading in ten days?
That's right.
Thirty-seven days or something? Care leave committee appointments. I did not open that either. Who's? It's opening now. Appointed.
Care leave, okay.
So we just had to approve them?
Yes, I had three of them. Their positions actually ended in August and I needed to ask you to renew theirs. That would be the Secretary Anne Malicki and Michael Cutie and Larry Bishop makes their...
Malicki.
Sorry. Makes their term in August one of 2017, if you guys would approve that.
Did you see them?
Yeah, I'm looking at them here, so.
Okay, do we need to sign this or anything? Or we just need to vote to approve it or?
Vote to approve it.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the appointments to the care leave committee.
So moved.
Second, all my favors say aye.
Aye.
I know.
Aye. Approval of county clerk's budget transfer for election services.
Well, it's not election services, it's for elections.
Election expenses from contingency.
Yes. Basically, all the bills are, I think, in except for two. So they're looking at a little over thirty thousand dollars are gonna be short. So I did.
We talked about this a while back. As you said it was gonna be over and then we just say, let's just wait until we have the bills and then we can, we know exactly what to transfer?
Well, we're, we're, the two bills is, one of them is just the drugs that we do and that's usually around six hundred dollars and I don't know what the other one is.
It's the five percent.
Oh, and five percent, so that's gonna be a couple thousand dollars, so.
Debbie, the attachment was forty-two thousand, this is thirty-one. So the thirty-one is what you need?
Yes.
Okay.
The forty-two was the first guess, I think, for Marvin.
Forty-two is our first guess and then, I think, Dawn has it down to about thirty thousand dollars now.
Okay.
Out of that 30,000, you're gonna, we're gonna get back 25,000, but we will not see it until May of next year because the state doesn't have it.
Oh, it's ours.
Do you hear what I said? We're gonna get $25,000 of that back because that, the state has to pay for the reprinty and we will not get that money back until May of next year, till the legislative can approve it because Secretary State's out of money.
Where's that bill?
That just goes with that?
I don't know, yeah.
Okay, we don't have to have any action on that. We just signed a transfer.
My only problem with it, Marvin, is, is that why should we have to pay for something that, that they screwed up and then wait six months to get our money?
Well, that's the only way you're gonna get your money back is to have to wait till the legislature approves it and they won't approve it till May, so that's the way, you gotta wait for it.
Can we send them a bill and tell them if it's not paid within 30 days, they're not gonna have a 1.5 percent service charge?
They must be charging interest.
I would.
I don't make any difference.
I'm not saying they're gonna pay. I'm saying send it to them. Tell them, we gotta pay our bills, y'all's are failures.
I know, but we're all, we're, you're not, we're not the only county that has.
I know, but you're on your way out. You can do it. What are they gonna do, get mad at you?
They ain't gonna do it, dude. I mean, it's just, it's just the way it works out, guys. That's, that's the state government.
So how long do we have to wait to get the $40,000 for the original ballots?
What, the 40,000?
Yeah, so we, we pay, we.
You paying that?
Well, right, but it's, it's on this bill right here. So it's $40,000 that we paid for the original ballots that we had to reprint.
But reprint's 25,000.
I realize that, but the 40,000 was for the original. And so, I mean, if we, if we pay this bill today, how long are we gonna have to wait before we get reimbursed from that? Or do we not get reimbursed from that?
We don't get reimbursed for that.
I made a mistake. I thought, I thought you were getting reimbursed by some jurisdictions, but I guess when it's a general election.
There is no jurisdiction on this and this is all about.
It was, it was all the state, so.
It's all, all the county pays.
It's county paid because it's got county issues on it.
Okay.
Plus state amendments, but we pay for it.
We pay for it.
Okay.
So, why not send them a letter and tell them they're gonna have a service charge if they don't pay it?
Yeah.
What, we're gonna get charged a service fee if we don't pay it by the time?
Yeah.
We didn't have money budgeted for it.
I just had a real hard time paying for something and waiting. You know, we're not a bank. I mean.
Oh, your kids aren't old enough for that yet?
Huh?
It's coming.
You should be one of the smaller counties that don't have the money that has to do this. I think they're the ones that's really suffering.
Oh, I'm sure.
That's Chris's point exactly, is send them a bill. They need to pay it now and so.
There's some smaller counties which really got hit hard with this.
We need to get them active to work on this.
Because of the state not telling us that there was even a suit going on.
That's, that's not our problem.
I know, but it, it becomes our problem when it, they don't tell us.
So if we tell the vendor that we're not gonna pay them because we don't have the money from the state, then what's gonna happen?
Well, vendor.
I, I know exactly where you're coming from. I don't disagree with you.
Vendor would probably not be very cooperative either.
The vendor contracts with us, so we're on the hook as far as that comes.
Sure.
I'm just having fun with it.
I mean, I'm gonna sign it, but I mean.
Lucky, we do have the money sitting there and we can go ahead and pay it.
Any other business wouldn't pay the bill. I mean, I'm just here to tell you, if, if you're not gonna get reimbursed for it, if somebody else, if you're waiting on a subcontractor to pay you or vice versa, you wouldn't pay the, you wouldn't pay for the materials.
Let's go put a mechanic's lane on the Capitol.
Let's get the sheriff to go over and lock it down. Take their Brink's truck.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you, Chris. It's frustrating and, I mean, I, I gotta pay my bills and if the person I'm working for doesn't pay his bill, I am gonna charge him a service charge.
Well, I agree with you, but that's just, you know, that's the way it is.
I know.
That's, you're, you're dealing with the government, guys.
I would still send them on a bill just for.
Send them a bill, but it ain't gonna do any good. whoever raised them the bill, they know exactly, because I already told them how much it's gonna cost them.
If it's state.
So they've had, they, they had all 114 counties call them and tell them how much they had to pay.
So, how come?
Or how much they had to request.
They can't be charged a service charge? How come they can't be charged service charge? If we don't pay that bill, we're gonna be charged a service charge?
Well, I, hey, I don't write the statutes. I just.
There's a statute that says they can't pay a late fee?
Well, there's nothing says.
Cannot be assessed a late fee.
I'm sure there's most probably.
I say we send them a bill and we put in there, have Jill write it up however we need to, that says if this is not paid in full in 30 days, you will be assessed a 1.5 percent fee on balance due. And if they don't pay it, so what? I'm gonna do it for the purpose of saying.
You might try it, but I don't think you'll get your money.
Well, but to your, to your point too, Marvin, you know, you say this is how government works. Well, we're government too and we're paying the bill. We're taking care of our debts and we're paying the bill within 30 days, just like the vendor sent us the bill. So, you know, wasn't our error, wasn't our problem, you know? Hey, it's not my problem that the state's out of money. You know, maybe they shouldn't be spending it on all these other programs or whatnot, but, you know, maybe take some of the legislature's salary away and they get something done, so.
Maybe the government should release the funds.
Yeah, yeah, one or the other, but.
Well, it should, but you know.
I, I know what you're saying, but, you know, we're, we're government too and we're taking care of our bills.
I think Secretary State works just exactly like we do. They got a budget and they spent their budget and they don't have the money. So now they have to wait till the budget's.
They gotta have contingency in there like we do. I mean, I don't like the answer, that's just the way government works. So that's just my two cents on that part. Well, that's my, about 45 cents on it, but I.
You're out of time.
I got all day. Well, till 11:00.
Now, we talked about this. It's gonna be shortened soon.
I know, it's, it's frustrating, Marvin. That's just, thanks for getting it taken care of. Guess y'all had a good election this year, way of paper read, so. Get to go out with better than your hat.
That's all I do.
Me too. We like to push things a little bit. We read it differently. Anything else to come before the Commission this morning? Anyone? Anyone admire a good joke or anybody killed anything big yet?
Are you, are you gonna get the budget calendar?
I do have one thing.
In the calendar?
I wanna know how much you had to pay to get in hers.
Hey, I, they had to give me.
Or how much did you get paid for that? Which way did it go?
I got some food and a drink out of it, so. And good company. There was good company up there.
It looked a little too classy for you.
Well, I got me a nice jacket, came from, I'm not gonna mention any names, but we know somebody that sells those, so. And I didn't pick it out, obviously, because it looked good. Some ladies picked it out. Here you go.
I just wanted to know how much you got paid, that's all.
I didn't get paid. They were desperate, I think. Didn't have any choices, so.
I opened that up and I see you and I think, now what did he do?
Yeah, one hundred of the sheriff's reports. All righty, well, motion to stand and recess?
Till 4:30. So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All righty.
Thank you.
All righty.